All in our places for our Chinese faces. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Santa Barbara County Board of Education Board meeting office. We will start with the call to order, which I've done, and the pledge of allegiance. Bruce.
Please join me as we pay honor to our community, our state, and our nation. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bruce. And now I'd like to introduce Hugo, who's providing our Spanish interpretation today.
Good afternoon. My name is Hugo Santos. And thank you, we have a future voice to provide access to the presentation from Spanish. So if any one of you wants to have access to the Spanish presentation of this event, so have some devices and wanted to access this Spanish. Buenas tardes. My name is Hugo Santos. Here presenting a future voice. In case of the que alguno de ustedes quisiere escuchar este evento en español, por favor haganme lo saber para que se proporcionen un equipo que será suave y claro para escuchar todo el evento en español. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. And now it's Anna, roll call.
Okay, Mrs. Cardy?
Here.
Mrs. Dany?
Here.
Mrs. DeWard?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Howell?
Here.
Mr. Porter?
And President.
Thank you.
I'm not aware of any changes to the agenda, so we will move right on to our president and board comments. I would just like to say that there is a beautiful story, since it's Fiesta time, on the cover of The Independent. And it's a love letter to the Fiesta written by Camelia? Camilla.
Cami.
Camille, yes. Barnwell. And this is your daughter?
Yes.
Isn't she beautiful?
That's gorgeous.
Yay. And it is Fiesta. Traffic was a little bit thicker coming down today. A little bit heavier. Any other board comments? Here. Okay. Hearing none.
Oh, excuse me.
Oh, yes.
I forgot. Sorry. Just a short one. After a two-year hiatus, the Santa Barbara County hosted their fair and included the Junior Livestock Program. And I just wanted to say, this is the first time since World War II that they had to cancel the fair because of COVID. So it was really exciting. I went to the fair, walked, saw the kids, saw the turkeys, the goats, the lambs, steer, the heifers. I love animals. And it's used to do see animals. And they had 600 competitors from kindergarten to 12th grade. And these are kids that find out about their, through their ag programs in their local schools and the 4H and the FFA program. And the community came out and supported them. There is a lot less kids. That's less than they usually have, but they expect a lot more next year. Thank you.
I too love that part of the fair. The rest of it I could do without. Always very special. All right, do we have any public comments today?
No requests for public comment.
All right. Hearing none, we'll go right into the superintendent's report.
Well, thank you and good afternoon. And again, congratulations, Cami, for your cover story. And not part of SB CEO's work, but
Nope.
Part of your personal, big part of your personal life. So really, really excited to feature that. And the NFL preseason, football preseason starts tonight. And you know, that means school is starting. So there's always a tie from football to school. And I'd love to share with you a few of those updates. So you have the updates in the board book. And I'll definitely pause to see if you have any questions or needs for more information related to any of those entries.
I have one question. Why the just-for-kids preschool was relocated? Why was relocated?
Just-for-kids relocated.
From the package? Film? I was just curious.
Absolutely.
If they run out of space?
It was a space issue at the Long Hope School District. And so they asked us to relocate.
Okay. So we can move over to Phil Mark.
Thank you. We're grateful for the space in Long Hope Unified that needed to move. So I have three. Oh, go ahead, Mrs. Cardy.
I was just going to mention Kristin, well, not Kristin, but the ECE team, that the Audacious Foundation is going to be convening Congress on Early Childhood Education Leaders on October 6th through 8th. And this is part of a series that they've done since it was the Horfle Foundation while it's the Audacious, but they're reinvesting in ECE. So I think I'd be interested to look at what's really going on.
Thank you. Thank you. So three additional updates for you, for your information that are not in your book. Again, back-to-school related. One has to do with four new superintendents that are beginning in this 22-23 school year. In Santa Maria Benita, you already have heard of him. He's been announced earlier, Dr. Darren McDuffie. And then in solving with the departure of Dr. Steve Seifert, we have Sierra Lockridge. And at Vista Del Mar, that was a new one from the, since the last time we met. So Dr. Lois Peterson retired. And Bree Valla, who was the deputy superintendent in Long Hope, is going to, has started there. And Long Hope Unified School District, Trevor McDonald, has departed. And so they're in the midst of selecting an interim superintendent right now. Could be announced today. It could be announced tomorrow. It's really, really close to being announced as an interim. And then they'll begin a search in Long Hope Unified. So wanted to let you know there's changes. There always seem to be. Even when we think there will be none, there's always one to five, it seems. And now we have four. Yes?
Just a quick question on that. There's, seems to be an increasing turnovers in superintendents, not just locally, but everywhere. Has there ever been like a superintendent boot camp provided by the county for new superintendents? Because a lot of them have never even been an assistant superintendent before. Some of them have never even been principals before. And they're stepping up into a really different job than they had.
Yeah. The boot camp. So several entities provide boot camps, like the AXA, which is the Association for School Administrators. They have a new superintendent's academy. And other leadership groups have academies as well. The way we do it in Santa Barbara County is, first of all, I will meet with all the superintendents. The cabinet team, the assistant superintendents will meet with the superintendents. And then we quickly get the new superintendents as part of our superintendent's council. So the all 20 superintendents meet and we connect and make sure that we, you know, talk about really important topics along the way. Some of it is learning by doing. Some of it, of course, is they don't know yet what they don't know. We also offer, we have a grant from our Curriculum Instruction Division that provides for coaching, so the cost of coaching and mentoring. So we match new superintendents with mentors that have been superintendents before. So that's, those are some of the ways we provide that boot camp. All right. So schools in Santa Barbara County are beginning to, really back-to-school open next week. We have Goleta, Orchid, and San Ynez Union, Valley Union School District opening up next week. The dates will be posted on our website. But we do have, next week is the start, then the week after, then the week after, to the following week. We just have a wide variety of start dates in Santa Barbara County, just like in California. So back-to-school is happening right now. Lots of professional development and staff, staff on site, preparing their classrooms and having staff development from their districts and our support as well. And then finally, the last component I wanted to share, we just got today confirmed dates for visits for our programs, for our students at the Juvenile Justice Center at Dos Puertas, as well as Fitzgerald. And so apologies for not getting that out to you with, you know, visuals. But I think what will, let me say a few words. And then what I'd like to do is coordinate the dates as options for you if you'd like to attend either of those dates. So again, the dates are, not again, but for the first time. September 6th is one option. And October 11th is the second option. And for probation in the Juvenile Justice Center for Dos Puertas, they require individuals to show proof of vaccination in order to attend. So wanted to share that in advance. The Fitzgerald is at the Farnell Road North County office. And so we, whether you have a proof of vaccination or not, we welcome you to join a visit there as well. So what we'll do behind the scenes is coordinate which goes first. Will we go to the Juvenile Justice Center first and then Fitzgerald, or vice versa? We'll get some times put to the calendar. Obviously, these are options for you. It won't, will not be an agendized board meeting, but rather a tour and an opportunity for you to visit and see the programs. So thank you, Bridgette, for coordinating that. Thank you, Deborah Hood, for the North County visits. Let me see if there's any questions now related to those dates. Yes?
About approximately how long will, from start to finish?
I'm not sure yet. I'm thinking travel time in between is 15 minutes. And we probably will be less than an hour at each. So that's a guess now, two and a half hours tops, yeah, for the whole.
So would both?
Both.
Both would happen on the 6th and both happen on the 11th?
Correct. Both happen on the 6th and then both happen on the 11th, both as options. Great question. And right now, it's looking like the AM is, so prenoon will likely be when the timing will occur versus afternoon. Other questions? All right. So we'll coordinate that offline with you and see who's available and who'd like to go. And we'll do that via email and likely through Anna. So thank you, Anna, for that. All right, back to you, Madam Chair.
Actually, I'm going to turn it right back to you. Perfect. To start the information background preface on the Smarter Balanced Assessment and Reading Literacy.
Thank you so much. And I'd love to give you a moment to adjust your chairs, your seats, the configuration of the room. We just, we'll go with the flow. As Ellen Barker gets her presentation set up as well. Just a little bit of background. Right now, as schools start up again, oftentimes what occurs is families and schools, PTAs, parent-teacher groups, begin to receive their scores, school student scores. And part of the CAS, or California System of Assessments, includes the Smarter Balanced Tests in English Language Arts and Math. And so we thought, since the scores will soon be published and literacy and reading is often in the media and in conversations, we're focused strictly only on reading and language, or English Language Arts in Smarter Balanced for the board presentation. And it's really informational, educational. We wanted to hook it to the fact that scores will be soon released, that you'll see them as well. So can't think of anyone better, smarter and more incredible to provide a presentation than Ellen Barker. So Ellen, thank you so much for this.
I'm sure you're going to say smarter and balanced.
Let me go back, rewind and say that, because that wouldn't even be there. Smarter. All right, thank you, Ellen.
Thank you, members of the board. So today, what I hope to do, oops, too far, is to give a little bit of meaning and context for the state ELA and literacy assessments and what these scores mean. And so I'll do three things. I'll tell you a little bit about the Smarter Balanced Structure and Reporting. I'll compare the former standardized tests to the new expectations, just for a little bit of contrast and context. And then we'll take a look at some sample items. And I'll show you where to see sample items in case you want to dive in a little bit further. So with that, I'll start with this and give you a moment to pause and think. When you hear the term literacy scores, so for example, if you hear X percent of our students are meeting the standard in ELA and literacy, just take a moment and think about what does that mean to you? And how are you defining ELA and literacy? So let me just give you a moment to take note individually. Okay. I'm going to come back to that question again, a couple times. So when we say something like students are meeting a standard, we are making a claim. And results from assessments, or as we often call them, assessment instruments, are used to make claims about what students know and are able to do. And so just thinking about any assessment that's out there, there's some content. In this case, we're talking about the California ELA and Literacy Standards. That content gets formed into an instrument of questions and tasks and items. And then from that, there's some way to quantify the student performance. And then there's usually a performance descriptor. So when you hear the, you usually hear the performance descriptor and you hear the content without the instrument and the quantitative in between. So I'm hoping to kind of uncouple all of that and give you just enough so that it's not wonky and in the weeds. So in Smarter Balanced, they actually use that terminology claims. And the whole purpose of the instrument of the Smarter Balanced Summit of Assessment in grades three through eight and 11 for literacy is to make these claims. So at grades three through eight, what we're claiming with these scores is that students are making progress on college and career readiness in English Language Arts and Literacy. And at 11th grade, we're saying that they're demonstrating that they're college and career ready when it comes to English Language Arts and Literacy. So that's what we mean by a test instrument makes a claim. These are the claims, and this is what we're scoring, and this is what we're testing. So for Smarter Balanced, however, there's also four additional claims in the English Language Arts and Literacy. And as you can imagine, one of them is reading, one is writing, the third claim is speaking and listening, and the fourth is research and inquiry. And all of those come from the collective common core state standards. So I'll give you a moment to read what the reading claim is, what the writing, speaking, listening, research, and inquiry. So each of these four areas, the reading, the writing, speaking, listening, and research and inquiry, each of those four contribute to the composite score or the composite claim overall. And so when we go to, back to this, okay, we know that those are claims. And then from those claims, there are quantitative scores. You hear things like cut scores and scale scores. There are quantitative scores that are then translated into qualitative descriptors of performance, which are intended to describe achievement. And this is what they look like. So for that overall claim, you know, students are college and career ready, or that they're making progress on the collective, there are four achievement level descriptors. Three is where we want students to be, meeting the standard. But we can also see that students can exceed the standard. And we can see that at level two, they're just nearly there. And level one, the standard is not met. So when you hear that term, meeting standard, it's not saying they know the grade level standards. It says they're meeting a standard that is a cut score for their grade level to meet that standard. So that's for the overall claim. Now, the reading, writing, speaking, listening, and research and inquiry, those areas, they don't have four achievement levels. So the student's overall score is going to be a one, two, three, or four. But on their individual score report that goes home to their parents, as well as reporting at the school level and the district level and the county level and the state level, there aren't three levels of description because there aren't enough items for the psychometricians and statisticians to really nail it down to four areas. There are just three. So it's really easy to tell when students are clearly above standard, clearly below standard. And then they can't really pinpoint exactly for certain if they're at standard because there's so few items. So there's sort of this range that they're at or near, just above and just below somewhere in that range. It's not intended to be an absolute, but to give a sense of the student's progress. So when we see the overall claims for the composite, four levels, when we dig into reading or writing or any one of those single areas, you'll only see three levels. Okay? So going back to the overall claim, you've probably seen this visual before. When you go to the CAS website or CDE and you are looking at scores for different entities, these here show the overall, that composite descriptor, for the students in California and the students in Santa Barbara County. And this was in 2019. That was the last year that everyone took the same test until this year, 2022. And as Dr. Salsito said, the 2022 scores are not published yet. We'll probably see previews of those, probably a month or so after school, all the schools start in California. Parents, however, are receiving their individual student score report. But this was 2019. So what you'll see is the colors up there match the colors here. And sometimes we talk about meeting and exceeding together, these first two. Other times, people will say even nearly meeting and exceeding is another way to look at it. So when we put the three of these together, we're looking at about 71% of students in 2019 met, exceeded, or nearly met for the overall. That's the composite, reading, writing, speaking, listening, research, and inquiry. And so then the same in California. You can see that the differential there, when you put the three together, you're at about 73%. So then when we look at the individual claims, we tend to look at the above and the near because near can mean exactly there, a little above or a little below. So when we compare those from 2019, this is what we see as well. So this is specifically for reading. And so in all grades together, again, you can see Santa Barbara County next to California. So if you were thinking about literacy as reading, you might have been thinking about this. If you were thinking about literacy as reading, writing, speaking, listening, inquiry, you may have been thinking about all of it. And so there are ways to dive into each of those areas. So let me pause there for questions. That's all the structure, the technical, and the wonky pieces. Okay. Next, we're going to talk a little bit about content and what does that mean? So once again, when you hear literacy, you know, about literacy scores, and you say, okay, now I just saw all these statistics, you're probably thinking, well, I wonder what students are being asked to do. I wonder what that looks like. Do you want to get in there and see? Okay, before we do, I'm going to take us down memory lane a little bit because I want to take us back to some of our own experiences with standardized testing and even the former tests that we had before we started using Smarter Balanced in 2015. So I talked about content. So currently, the content that this test is based on is the California Common Core State Standards, which were first adopted in 2010. And then the instrument that we use is the Smarter Balanced Summit of Literacy Assessment. This is now. And this we started giving universally in 2015. Formerly, prior to that, we used the 1998 California ELA standards. And we had a whole variety of tests before we settled on these two. And one is the California High School Exit exam. I'll talk about that one in just a moment. Probably heard about the KC. And that was in play from 2002 to 2015. And then the CST, the California Standards Test for ELA. And those were separate tests at each grade, second through 11. And that ended when Smarter Balanced came in. So taking a look at the old tests, I'm going to give you a few statistics and then a few samples. So if we talk about the KC, which was something that every high school student in California had to pass as a graduation requirement. Students started taking it their sophomore year and then kept taking it until they passed it. As I said, it was based on the 1998 ELA, mostly 10th grade standards, but some eighth grade standards. The ELA portion had 80 multiple choice questions and one to two essays. The reading passages were pretty short, generally one to two pages, which was generally about 250 to 800 words. And then they'd answer like three, four, or five questions about a passage. And it was all multiple choice. And the multiple choice had a stem, four responses, A, B, C, and D, and no, none of this, none of the above. And, you know, when you took the SAT, you remember, they're like, okay, you get points for a right answer, but you get points deducted for a wrong answer? No. So you could actually, there's no penalty for guessing on this one. And the passing score was 60% correct to pass. So people do statisticians in here. You know there's four answers. So by 2010, about 81% of our 10th graders were passing on the first try. Here's what's one of the, this is from one of the released sample test questions. So you can see, this is just two pages, about eight or 900 words. And you have questions that ask you to identify the genre. Give the major conflict or plot, again, multiple choice, a character trait from those two pages. Okay? So that's often what folks think that the high school tests might look like. Similarly, I've got a CST from third grade here. And what you can see is that it's a very short piece of text, four optional, multiple choice, and it's very, very basic comprehension. So this is what we had, those two tests, up until 2014. Now, when we get into the Smarter Balanced and we want to talk about reading, reading exists both in the reading claim, but also in the research and inquiry claim because they need to read multiple sources and then, you know, analyze multiple sources and bring them together. So what I thought that I would do is share one of the, just one of the sample questions. And what I'm going to do is actually go into it first so that you can see it and then come out of it. So you can see where it is on the site. Okay, so when I went to that item, this is what I get. And this is what students actually see. It's a sample item, but it mimics the actual items. So what you'll see over here is that, by the way, this is third grade. So nine-year-olds is what we're talking about. So this item is in the research and inquiry. And you'll notice that it's called Astronaut's Narrative Performance Task. On the left side are the instructions where it has the task. So let me make it a little bit bigger there. So your class is studying space. Your teacher is asking students to choose. You're going to read two sources about the life of an astronaut and be prepared to do something with it. That's what it's telling over here. Then we have these sources. Source one, informational text that students need to read by scrolling here on the left. So it talks about weightlessness. It talks about the training. It talks about the International Space Station. It talks about classes in scuba diving because they look, their uniforms look like they're scuba divers. Each astronaut has a special job to do. It talks about what they do up there, training. They have to learn how to work together. And then it talks about no gravity and weightlessness and floating. And then it talks about no gravity and weightlessness and floating and feeling weightless is fun, but it's hard work and they have to exercise. And then it lists, it lists all the sources. Then they have to read a second segment written by someone else. And once again, it's about astronauts, but it says a lot about what happens to the human body. So again, about weightlessness, the blood throwing to their face, them getting bird legs, what happens with circulation and muscles and bones and weakness, and you have all that. Okay. So after students read those two pieces, then they need to come over to the right. And from this, if I come over here. Now they have several tasks to do. So the first task, they have to choose the box that matches each source with the idea or ideas that they support. So you can see that there's three ideas and they have to tell whether it was in Article One, Article Two, or both. So for those of us keeping count, there's 27 permutations there. So guessing is not going to be an option, you know, so they can get one, two, or three of them right. Then they have to generate their own reasons why it's hard to be an astronaut, one from Source One and one piece of evidence from Source Two, and cite those sources. These are nine-year-olds. And then in the next part, they have to use their notes, all that they just read, all of that research and that citing of sources, to write a story, a narrative text about astronauts. And then they're asked to use details, dialogues, and description from the research to make it more realistic. And then they're given reminders of what a well-written story consists of. And then using the word processing tools, they type their story in the box. So going back. So that is a performance task for third grade. And so if we kind of break it down and we look at all that's happened, we've got students working on a split screen with their content on the left and all of their tasks on the right. They get instructions here, they get instructions at each box, they get reminders about what a quality piece of work looks like, they have sources, they have all of that happening. So you have your left and your right. So in just thinking about some of the elements of reading, I did a word count on the two passages together without any of the instructions. And that alone was longer than any of the high school passages from the old KC. It's over 1,000 words. The sentence complexity and all of the other elements of it put it at a flesh and decayed reading level of 4.5, which is upper third grade all the way to lower fifth grade, the background knowledge. So you don't really learn about body systems like circulation and blood and bones and muscles till fifth grade. So it isn't necessarily the background information. This is new. Gravity and weightlessness is something that some students may have had experience with, but not as much as maybe when we were kids and we all had going-to-the-moon fever. And so they talk about scuba, body systems, gravity. The language demands of the instructions and having a conditional point of view is really complex for English learners because it's asking students to imagine that they're being given this assignment, but they're actually being asked to give the assignment. So it's a conditional tense. And then, of course, there's computer scrolling that they're doing to do their reading. There are tools that they can use to highlight and mark text, but they have to have been practicing those as well. In terms of the tasks, as we said, the first one, 27 possibilities. The second one is generating and citing their own evidence. Then they're translating all of that information into a narrative text with some descriptors of what makes for good text. So that's just one possibility. That's just one element. That's a performance task. Now, there are other reading tasks at third grade that are individual. There are some that are multiple choice, but there are some that are multiple choice with multiple right answers as well. There are matching, there's drag and drop, there's a whole variety. So in the slide presentation, and Anna will send you the link because it has the hot links to the sample items, we can go in and we can see sample items where we choose the grade level and then choose English Language Charts or Math, and then choose one or more of the claims. And then it tells you about, this is just assessment speak for targets, which are a way to translate content standards into testable targets. So when you do, if you pick one of these, you might get one of these little cards and this is a reading at sixth grade. And it tells you what the, whether it's reading literature or reading informational text, and it'll say a multi-selective even has this. So if you click on it, it takes you to the item. You can also look at the item like this, the items. This is hot high school. So you can see the variety of item types, you can see the variety of standards and targets, and that was just in the high school reading. And so then many of them, especially when the students have to generate texts, they have a rubric and exemplar, scoring exemplars there. So we talked about just the structure of how Smarter Balanced makes claims about literacy and puts those into achievement level descriptors. We looked at just the way in which comparing this test to maybe some of the tests we used to take, and then we looked at some sample items. And so now it's time for questions. Yes?
How long would a third grader have to do that?
That is part of an overall test and they, it's an untimed test. What we find is they spend, it really varies, but they might spend three hours, three to four hours on testing in ELA and then more in math. So multiple hours of testing.
And they just get done how much ever they get done in?
There's, it's, there's no time limit. So they're allowed to take as much time as they want until they have taken all of the items on their test. And they do it over multiple days, the different parts of a test. It's a great question. This is starting.
How are they prepared to take this test? And are there accommodations?
Yes.
Dyslexic?
Yes.
People being H D, narrative, versus I can imagine this would be fraught.
So how are they prepared? There are multiple resources and multiple ways in which students are prepared. So I showed you the summative assessment, but on the Smarter Balanced website, there are, not only are there sample tests where teachers can actually take the students through stimulating the whole test, but there are also these interim assessment blocks where they can take little pieces. Teachers can use those both as sample item tests, but also as teaching materials to teach kids how to navigate the test and like how to manage the split screen, how to use their executive functioning skills to work through the tests. So there's lots of those opportunities for preparing for the tests and preparing and using, you know, reading online and reading on their devices and writing on their devices. You asked about accommodations. And in Smarter Balanced, there are three levels. There are universal tools, designated supports, and accommodation. So there are universal tools that are built in that students can use, highlighting, colors, you know, different things like that. Then that next level up is for any student, anywhere, they can turn, they, the teacher and the testing coordinator by student ID can turn on certain designated supports. So there are some students for whom the split screen is not handleable. And so there are ways in which they can maneuver that and have multiple, you know, have it not next to each other, but sequential. There are a whole variety of these designated supports. And then there are accommodations. So every fall, we remind everyone and we work on it on Curriculum Council that they go through the testing coordinator, any of the ed specialists, and the teachers in working through with various students to know what their IEP, what their 504, or even just what their needs are. And then the important part of that is making sure that you're practicing with those supports, accommodations, and tools throughout the year. Thank you for that question because it's a big part of it that I didn't include. Yes, Mr.?
Knowing that anything can become controversial these days, is there, kids are taking the exam, is there general buy-in by both teachers, parents, kids? Is there, anecdotally, do you hear people say it's insufficient for this reason or it's too skewed towards this or that, or is it pretty well accepted?
Those are great questions. I think that it's one of the best assessments we've ever had, that we've ever come across. You know, some of those old assessments really had a lot of issues, but that doesn't mean that this one doesn't have issues as well. And so I don't want to speak on, you know, the quality of the test. What I will say is this, our students, the overwhelming majority of what we've heard since they've started taking it and after the first couple of years where it was really rocky with the testing, majority of students, and this is true in general, they want to do well on things. That might change as they get older into high school because in high school, the tests that are really high stakes for them are their AP tests, their SAT tests, you know, those different tests. So it all kind of comes within a certain block of time. So there's a little bit of test fatigue, but many, many students really do try their best. With that said, I can't speak to overwhelming support on the part of parents and, and because everyone has their own opinions and their ability to make choices. And schools do have to publish and they are held accountable for their participation rates. And federal requirements have an expectation of a 95% participation rate. But it is allowed in California, it's state law, that you can exempt your child from the test. And so we have to manage the federal accountability with our state priority of being able to allow parents to make those choices.
Are we going to talk about our kids, our few kids that we have, SBCEO kids?
In terms of, of how they take the test?
Qualitatively, we have a very unique population. And looking at 2019 ELA, about 14% of our kids were meeting or exceeding standards and another 14% were nearby, well below state averages. Again, a very unique population. So I would ask all the staff, whoever wants to chime in, you know, do you think that's the best? And I know we're going to work as hard as we can, that's not the question. Can we do better than that, given a rotating population that is so unique? Can we expect, you know, everybody wants to see improvement over time, but we don't have the same kids over time. So what is this going to look like for us in 2022 and going forward, in your opinion?
Well, I'm going to turn that opinion over to Bridgette because I don't overs. But while, while she's looking at that, one thing that I will say that you brought up, and I'd like to lift up something that you said is not only that our students turn over, but as you saw in that first claim, the claim is progressive. And in ELA, what we see even throughout the state is in most cases, the, the scores go up. Our third grade scores are the lowest and then higher and higher because over time, more and more students, you know, become proficient, but also they get used to taking the test, et cetera. With the population that we have, it's not only that our population turns over, but, you know, we have them in 11th grade. Bridgette, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think it's not only that they're turning over, but I'm trying to look at how many students actually tested that year because it's a very small percentage. What I think some of the challenges we face is that our students could be with us for a very, maybe two weeks prior to the test date. Very often, we don't have students that are with us an entire year and then take the test. I do know that one of the things that we noticed this last round was that we actually had some students at Fitzgerald who had been with us for a year and made progress on their ELA. So that was a good indicator that the instruction we were providing was supporting them in that testing cycle. But to answer your question, I think for our population, we may, I hate to say that because it sounds pessimistic, but we may not see the numbers that we would see at a traditional high school because of the factors that we are faced with, the really small number of students we're testing. So the sample size is smaller. That's a huge piece of your percentage. The time and length of time that we have our students with us, and then where our students are coming in, many of them have significant gaps in their education. Specifically, you're just talking about ELA, but if I think about math, many of them come in without even algebra. And so their starting, their base starting is a level of remediation. So we're trying to target that and provide that. But I think to really see the increase that we want, we would need to see our students with us for a longer duration of time to be able to provide that sort of intensive support that they need. And we, I think, can all say that we don't want to see our students for longer durations of time. We want them to be able to go back to their traditional high schools and, and not be in, in our schools. So our goal would be to get them up. The reality of that, I hope that we can make increments of improvement, but I again don't know if we would ever reach what you would see at a traditional high school. Assessments, are they every year? Do they change? Are they just the same test for third graders? You're, you're talking, do they, we do the?
It's a great question because what the student gets may be very different even from the person sitting right next to them, from the very large test item bank. And then what happens too is that there's a little bit of artificial intelligence in the, not in the performance tasks, but in the other tasks prior to that. So what happens is the student takes an item, you know, they're given an initial sort of reading item. Based on what they get, or I'm sorry, based on how they perform, that impacts whether the test chooses something, you know, they didn't get it quite right, you know, then it goes lower. If they get it right, it goes a little higher. And so there's.
Real time.
In real time, yes, on the computer. So there's a little bit of AI, artificial intelligence, that helps to do that. That's why when we talk about a quantitative score, there's not like, oh, everybody got exactly 70 questions and the cut is 60% of them right. But it has all of these different algorithms built in for determining that student's score. And they get a grade level scaled score that is then translated into the one, two, three, or four.
So to understand, so you have a class of third graders and they're all getting something, a different test?
If the teacher were to walk around and look, you know, over their shoulders, these five students, two of them might have gotten this item and three of them might have gotten, you know, two of the same item and another item. And so there's not one instrument that says number one is about this and number two is about that. To the larger question that you asked, they are constantly trying out new items. So sometimes there's even items that a student will take that's not part of their score because that's how they're testing the validity. because that's how they're testing the validity of the item. They don't do a lot of that, because they don't want to extend the testing time. And then after a while, those items become part of the sample items. So you can, you know, the sample item bag that I gave you the link to has a variety of items that have either been retired, or they've been crafted to be just like the items. And then there's a whole, a whole other set of items that are in the interim tests that teachers have for using in the classroom, whether they're in the blocks or the comprehensive. Those tend to be a little bit more stable and not dynamic based upon the students' interaction. So it kind of is rocket science, you know, where you're in the rocket, and all of the blood goes to your face, and you get bird legs, apparently. But, so, any other questions?
If I may just make just a few comments. Thank you so much, Ellen, for your presentation and for the great engagement by the board. It makes me think about just other items that I know Ellen can speak to, but wasn't part of this presentation. Makes me think about the technology, the use of technology, the proficiency of the technology. But more than that, too, schools and school systems have long needed to decide, are they going to use Chromebooks? Are they going to use Apple products? Are they going to use touchscreens, mouses? They really have to think about the system. And it's interesting, too, because it used to be that you'd go to schools and see a computer lab, oftentimes used for this kind of testing environment. And now you'll see that the students in a classroom environment all taking out their in-class Chromebooks or devices. And then it goes to the connectivity that a school and district needs throughout their entire school. And you have everybody taking online tests. So I just want to talk about not only the proficiency that the students, third graders, need to type, and, you know, 11th graders need to be typing, but just the systems of technology. We've talked a lot about content, and then I'll say, there's a lot of attention, too, by schools, by principals, by districts, related to supporting the tenacity it takes for students to continue to take the test for hours, for days at a time. So for example, snacks that they have, providing, you know, the breaks that they're taking, the practice that they have before the test. So it's so much more than the content, we all can see it. But I just wanted to break apart a few of those items, because it's like one decision, really even related to technology, really has reverberating impacts related to smarter balance. So, thanks.
Very interesting. And I, you know, gosh, between you and Bridgette, you could talk for ever about these subjects, and we'd never hear the same thing twice. I mean, it's all very, very interesting.
I'm not sure I pass 3rd grade.
I'm sitting here going, I'm 3rd grader. No, yeah, absolutely in trouble. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Let's see, what do we have on that? The minutes from July, and the registration of credentials and other documents, acceptance of donation, and declaration of surplus.
I would move to approve all the items of consent.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor or opposed, motion passed. And now we're going to get to section one of our action items, and that has to do with our filling the board vacancy. And at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Maggie, who is the Chair of the Board Organizational Development Committee.
Good to meet you. We've all received the packet of information on the results of the Board Organization meeting that we held on Monday. One is the calendar, which is pretty self-explanatory where we're headed. As of Monday, we will be opening up the application process for those in the community that are interested in applying Peter's unexpired term. Put it down line of August 17. We talked about the process, and we're able to come to some definitive decisions in the application process, which you all have in your hands, which mirrors the calendar. The eligibility we need to make very clear to those making application would be those residing in the old district trustee area. We have Peter Ram for re-erasure. If they're interested in applying in 2024, they need to also reside in the new defined boundaries of Peter's district. Does anyone have any particular questions?
Let's start with the calendar. Anything on the calendar? And the application to fill the vacancy?
Right, I was, that was what I was saying. We did talk to some extent on the application. We wanted to be very clear, didn't want to disappoint an applicant that might come forward. And it's very self-explanatory when you look at it, the candidates residing within the boundaries of trustee area number two. And if they have any further questions, they can call the county education office, get clarity. To, let's see. We are also asking them to review items of information to make sure that they're fully versed in the role of county board member and about the Board of Education itself. And we were asking them to indicate that they have in fact reviewed them. We then have, I think, some good questions that we'll be able to review as body before we go into the interview process. Does anyone have any comments on any of those pieces of information that the applicant will be saying?
Having attended the meeting, this was adequate before, I think it was really good. Things like offering the opportunity for candidates to call the election office. We're really digging over back to the first year. No one has an excuse for being misunderstood, getting involved in that. And having the two informational videos and checking the box they wrote, that's so helpful. So I think that's, I mean, you did a good job.
I do have some questions. So I'm comparing this process against somebody who just runs for the county board of education. So why would we care about the occupation employer or the number of years they've lived inside TUT?
Well.
Why would we care? Why would we ask that?
Why wouldn't we ask that question? I think that's good information, whether you're running for an office or if you're applying to fill a position itself.
If you submit paperwork to the calendar and run for our positions, you don't submit this information.
You could.
You could.
You say it, you can't say it, you can't.
You can. We're required to, that's the difference.
So are you suggesting that we not ask that question?
Well, a lot of this, we don't ask candidates, or I think we should. I mean, we don't ask regular candidates. But the occupation employer, why would that make a difference? I think, you go ahead.
I'll speak for myself. I think each of us around the table here brings something different to the table in our background, in our career paths, that brought us to where we are today, and to make us an effective member of the board. So asking that question, I don't think is inappropriate.
Joe?
I think, I don't think the questions are intrusive. And it's, it's much different than considering a candidate and doing it. But the process is so short, and the interview itself is so short, that I think we need to give a candidate every opportunity to tell us about themselves and the application, so we have that information to focus on, the questions and their answers in the interview. So I think it's relevant, because it's, we're kind of speed dating. So I think it's relevant information to help us consider not only the individual candidate, but how they stack up against other candidates. Three retired teachers who are all seeking a position in someone else that I can make up a hundred hypotheticals, but I think it's relevant and helpful.
So my concern would be that, you know, anything on here could cause somebody to not be liked by the board to move forward. So if somebody on here is an attorney, and say, well, we already got an attorney on the board, so we're not even going to consider you, is that fair?
I would hope we wouldn't do that.
It's relevant, but it's not, I think.
Because it helps us to know more about the candidate than what we would know if we didn't ask that question. I just think it's a matter of, I like the speed dating, what you're saying.
This is a good question, yes.
Yeah. It's just a way to get to know them and the skills and the expertise that they would bring with them. And I, I mean, I would hope we were all mature and adult enough that we wouldn't ever hold it against them, any of them, for anything that they would say on here. I would hope they would hopefully answer through faithfully and truthfully, and we would accept it as it's offered.
I mean, we can move forward, I just don't like the questions. But we're all disagreeing.
Well, Blackout was an answer, so.
I can give an example. I think that, I never thought of that, Bruce, but I think that you can have bias. Just naturally, we're human. When you have that specific question, where that could be incorporated in question number four, because you're asking about professional life. I know of that, that there's a board, a school board member that came out of the prison system and ran for the, ran for office. So now if someone asked you, well, I just came out of prison, so I have no, you know, what's my occupation and number of years of residence? So I do see that there could be a potential for bias, even though we are, you know, going to be, you know, hopefully neutral on everyone. But I just, I kind of, I never thought of that about that. So I do think that occupation does come out in a candidate's statement. I always think about when we fill out our candidate statements, that was part of the process of your level of work experience. So it's going to shine through, but I think asking the direct question, maybe, I'm not sure if that, if that might prohibit somebody from coming? Like, maybe that somebody has a strength that they want to really focus on, and it's not their, it's not their occupation.
That they're going to have an opportunity. This is an application to prepare us for an interview. The interview is going to make or break their candidacy. They could look great on paper, but just bottom of the interview, or they could have gotten out of prison, or have this body background, and we listen to them, and we're totally inspired by their passion for education, this and that. I think we're sophisticated enough, that this is part one, that this is 30% of the process to prepare us. 70% of the process is the person sitting there answering the questions. So I think the more we know, the more effective we will be asking the questions. And I can't imagine any of us are going to be so biased by this piece of paper that we're going to say, I'll tune out of the conversation.
And it's a public record, sorry, excuse me. It's a public record, too, so this is something that is going to be, you know, the whole public can see. So I kind of think this is a privacy issue.
I would almost liken it to, many of us have interviewed scholarship applicants, and they look great on paper, or they look horrible on paper. And when you do across the table with these students, and they shine, and all of a sudden, you see a whole different side of that student. I think, as Judy or someone said, the more information that we have, the more clearly we can make a decision when we go through the interview process.
Susan? I was just going to add that I think we're looking for substantive information, both on paper and as articulated as a candidate. And then the balance of the two will result in promoting the candidate. And it's as simple as that, I think. We have the information we need, as long as it is relevant and non-intrusive, and that passes all the engine guidelines, why others? And privacy is an issue, but yet we're asking them to interview in popular, comfortable, and record it. So it's up to the candidate to determine what level they'd like to share. I don't know if the process is going to be illustrative, but who's interested in this position and why?
May I insert a comment? I was just looking at the, I was on my phone, because I was looking at the candidate statement when you submit one in elections, because you were making the parallel. And the idea that popped up from that is, for the spaces that say other information regarding the occupation employer and number of years, it could be a place where you put optional. Because it is an optional thing that we're pointed, it's, we have a ballot statement for it. There would be your name, your age, your occupation, it says that. And that whole statement itself is optional. So it's something to put on the table. If you want to leave it in and write an optional that allows for the candidate to answer it or not answer it on the application.
You know, we're also asking for their resume, sort of.
That's true.
I mean, did they say no, or?
That optional, too.
I think, I would suggest we adopt this approach, but.
And they are also notified, advised on this application process that the interview will be recorded. So it shouldn't be any surprises for an applicant. I certainly appreciate expressing your concerns, but I believe that we kind of massaged it pretty thoroughly on Monday, and this is already a result, and unless there are some major changes to make, we should be impressed, I guess.
I would just like to make one comment, clarification, Michelle. I'm not sure, when you said this is a public document and everyone will see it. Everyone sees our application for candidacy when we run for office as well. So there's no privacy issue different than what?
Well, you choose what you want to put on your candidate statement and how you want to show yourself.
Well, I think you can choose how you answer the question as well. And again, I get back to the point that, you know, at some point, you could pick or see a bias, which I believe are real. I don't disagree that that happens, but in just about anything that you would look at from one perspective or another. And I think, again, we're here to apply our wisdom and our fairness in looking at these, knowing that bias exists, and doing our best not to let it influence our choices and our decisions. You know, otherwise, there wouldn't be people here on the board who do think and are intelligent. So.
And we're a collective body, not one vote is going to sway this board if we have discussion and dissent.
But that doesn't mean that I would be opposed to saying optional if that fits the comfort level more. I'm not saying that I would be opposed to that, I'm just giving my general feeling. So, Joe, I think we're going to go ahead and look at the questions. We're not going to approve each item. So we have on record that Joe has, did you make a motion?
Well, I did, we can handle it the way you want. I, at the appropriate time, I'm happy to promote if we adopt this as is. If it doesn't pass, we can amend it, but that's part A of the whole process.
Okay. All right, so is there any further discussion at this point about the application and its process? Then I'd like to move to the 20-minute interview questions. And Mrs. Ward did respond when I went out to the board members, and she asked. And Mrs. Stewart did respond when I went out to the board members and she had some additional questions, and I believe those are all the papers that she had. So we have an amendment to question number three. She added the last phrase, to develop a common vision, mission and key strategic direction. And then she totally added item number four and a suggestion on item number five. So that is, I'm opening this up for discussion. And, Michelle, did you want to expand?
Yes, I did, I love the questions, but I was just thinking 20 minutes is a long time. And I think that if we have, I think we have more time to ask questions of our candidates. And I just think, you know, I'm thinking about what our role is here. We are representing a group of voters in District Two, and there's 60,000, we just looked at the district names, there's 60,000 people that live in this district. So we are making a decision for them. And I just thought this is, I don't like, I don't feel comfortable, but this is the way it is because elections are very expensive. So this is our role. So I was just thinking about the kinds of questions that, you know, adding more as much as we can, we can get in terms of, we ask what's on paper, they're going to see these questions in advance so they have time to prepare. And I actually think that's a good thing, that they do. Because I think there's a lot of thought provocation, you know, that you can have from these different questions. And I think the first three are great. I just think we need to focus, our, most of it is about governance and about their personal, you know, statement, but I think we need to ask a specific education question, something about students. We don't mention anything about students or education in our three questions. And I was thinking about our role is one of our, you know, one of the legislatively, one of our roles is acting as an appellate for those three, inter-district transfer and charter schools and expulsions. So I just think it'd be interesting to see what their priorities in terms of what their, I think I stated it about, you know, how they would, in terms of due process, consistent and fair treatment of students and other stakeholders. So just love to hear what their thoughts and. I think that'll force them to do a little bit more research too, as well as what, what this appeal process is about. And I think giving them a chance to conclude and ask them if they have anything to add might be something else like this.
And I totally concur with your suggestions. I think they were great suggestions and I appreciate you taking the time to submit them. We open-ended it as well to ask the candidates at the beginning of the interview to reintroduce themselves to us. We've met you on paper, now we're meeting you live, tell us about yourself and is there anything you'd like to expand upon? And then question number five does the same thing for you. Are there any other?
I have just a couple of points of clarification, Michelle. On your addition to number three, my cursory reading of that now is that we're asking them in what ways they would work collaborative with the other board members and the superintendent, and we're now restricting it to common vision, mission and key strategic direction. And I guess I, I don't want to limit that answer to those areas.
Right.
But, I mean, I.
How about as an example? Maybe just to give them more of a prompt or a, but I see your point. I wouldn't want to limit that as well.
No, we don't want.
Susan, can you think of a way that we could use it as a prompt without limiting their perspective that that's all the kind of things that we want to talk about?
Yeah, it's a great, great point. And do you have those suggestions?
Sure, it's your turn to talk.
Yeah, of course.
But it'd be interesting though, to see if they came up with that on the ground. How they don't do that, you know, if they say, you know, I'm going to help develop a common vision.
We're kind of giving them. Yeah, I, if you would be okay with that, I would like just to leave it the way it was.
Okay.
And then on number four, I see that as two separate points. How do you see the relationship between the county board of education and local school board decisions? And then, and, forget the and, what would be your priorities in terms of process consistency and treatment of students? I see, I almost feel that should be two questions rather than one.
I'd go to a bar on second sentence.
Aren't we all?
We all are. A whole paragraph.
So that, that would just be my only suggestion there for you to consider, but it was, you know, your input, so.
Can you make the call? Am I in the board? I'm going to make that change.
I think that the closing statement is a great idea, you know, the opening, the closing. I'm surprised we didn't take out, but it really gives them an opportunity. If they have something to say, they're going to have an opportunity to say it. I think that's great. I think the leading, the addition of number three, I think number three is, is probably better. That I think the last sentence, what would be your priorities, to me isn't impossible. Is due process more important than fair treatment? I think it's, it's so mushy, I mean, it's, I'm not sure what we're going to get with it because you can't, I mean, how would we vote? Do we prefer due process over fair treatment of students? I mean, they're, they're all, we have these standards and we apply them all. So I think the question is good, the first statement is excellent because it just reminds them of this role we play and the relationship to get their thoughts on that is fine. I would propose a friendly amendment to just stop at decisions.
And strike that last question.
I, we say, and what would be your priorities, period, it takes in terms of due process, just eliminate.
And what would be your priorities?
And what would be your priorities, period? Is that okay?
Well then, I would not put that in because I don't, then we gotta told them what priorities. I just think it's, I think the first two sentences are stopping at decisions. We kind of inform them and then we sort of ask them to ponder on the relationship. And I think it'll be really interesting to get their views and be sure they understand. And I think with that, we've accomplished a lot and I, so I would just end at decisions.
We can answer again.
So what I'm hearing is we are proposing to strike the amendment that Mrs. Stewart proposed at the end of question number three, and to strike the words, and what would be your priorities, et cetera, et cetera, and retain the ballots of the suggestions of Mrs. Stewart. Is that correct? Are you all agreeing? Okay, then Chair, I will turn it back to you for a motion.
I am looking for a motion to accept this packet. I'll move it.
I did, go ahead.
I'll move it up to the packet. We'll be there in a minute.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent job, everybody. That was, thank you. That was value added.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you to the committee.
For me?
Thank you to the committee. I'm sure there's a lot more.
Well, I got it.
And thank you to Anna for cleaning herself after we did.
Oh, yeah. Actually, we should all just be thanking Anna because I have no idea what we left where. I was waiting till I saw the packet and go, oh yeah, that's what we did. Okay, number 14, still an action item. Reimburse expenses to board members to attend the California County Boards of Education, Board of, Boards of Education, CCB, annual conference in September. There is a conference in Monterey on September 9th through the 11th of this year. And we're presenting this item in accordance with Board Policy 9250 regarding reimbursement to board members. Motion?
I have a, oh.
Oh, comments?
Yes, I just wanted to be clear, how many board members will be in attendance, wanting to attend?
I believe there are two that have signed up and you, if you've finished.
Susan's.
She's for the superintendent.
Yeah.
So three board members and a superintendent.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make that motion. Thank you, Michelle.
Second.
Second.
Bruce, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And now I had asked Susan to give us a little bit of an update report on how our audio recordings of board meetings are going.
Great, thank you. I'm going to pass on a very brief summary on that so we can see it together. It'd be very hard to. Whoops. And since the board made a decision to go ahead and have board meetings recorded audio, we've had June 9th, the board meeting, and July 7th. We've also had the July 26th meeting, but you'll see that that's not yet been posted on the website. For June 9th and June 7th, there have been a number of views, 35 and 23. Their asterisk shows down below that the analytics show at this point, it seems to indicate that it's really internal staff that's viewing or clicking because they're actually working on the audio postings. That's what it's showing so far. Kami's giving me the nod on that. You can see the average viewing time through the analytics there, the three minutes and 16 seconds, the one minute and 50 seconds. We do have the transcription, we pay for that transcription through Verbit. You can see the cost there. We know that, or it's estimated that about 90%, maybe a little bit more of the Verbit translation, the transcription is really, really on top, is accurate, about 90%. So there's some staff time that's required to read through it, make sure that it's, it is accurate and fill in the blanks that are needed. So items for consideration, the general workflow, again, leaving out all the details and the people who are working on it behind the scenes, really, it does take about two weeks from start to finish, so from the board meeting to it being posted. We record the meeting, that's the easier part, I think. Then there's the transcription, getting that back, as I said, editing, looking through it, producing the audio file in YouTube, making sure it's EDA compliant and creating chapters so that when somebody, chapters meaning that if somebody were to go onto it to look at the audio, they know this is when we talked about item one, this is the time we talked about item two, so we create those on our end. So far, Spanish translation and/or interpretation have not been requested. And so I'll stop there with a summary of the audio board meetings so far. See those questions?
I would like to ask the board, given this information, how do we have a three-minute board? That's pretty amazing. Anyhow, what's, what's your reaction to this information?
It's still early.
It's still early.
It's okay.
Small data set.
Okay. Mr. Ferro?
Small data set.
So, yeah, small data set.
Just the cost out of pocket, so to speak, is very modest, which is helpful. The staff time is hard to quantify. I think it's really interesting if, I think another three months, it's not like we're necessarily going to build our audience, but three months would give us a lot more information on all of it. So I think it's good so far and we stay tuned.
Who primarily on staff is involved with the work that needs to be done?
See, I will turn to Kami and Bill in the details here, but Anna Friedland, Kami Barnwell, Ally Adam and Matt Evans are all, Matt's right here. So a lot of the touchpoints from staff to make sure that what we want to post, we want to be quality audio, we want it to be easily accessible, and so it takes, we actually are trying to quantify the time it takes. Not, not really for purposes other than for internal, so that we can have the steps that it takes to ensure that it's done well. Kami, anything more than that?
Perfect. That's exactly how I would describe it.
Okay, great.
Okay. Do we have any thoughts on reconsidering a video recording of future board meetings?
I would like to let the audio play out a little bit longer to see the effectiveness there before we move to video.
Okay.
I think we need to really see who's actually, I'm surprised, no, not surprised, because it's new and the board probably hasn't really gotten the now maybe that we are doing the audio. We may get more play from the public, regiment, staff, trying to make sure that we're qualitative and quantitative in our presentation. So I would, I would suggest that we table the video until we see just how effective the audio is at this point.
And the notification on the fact that there is an audio recording that will be made available within two weeks, that's, that's part of the noticing of the original meeting agenda that goes out.
Correct.
So the public is made aware that they can.
Only on the agendas, exactly. So right on, as an example, the third bolded part of the agenda today talks about an audio recording. So that's how the public is notified.
I will say that initially I was a little reluctant to jump over that hurdle, but now I'm really glad we're doing this and it is the right thing to do. Kami's got his record of the meetings, he would need to go back and say, what did I say? What did you say? In addition to the minutes, you know, the tone and tatter of comments. We're going to appreciate having that for that meeting. But then we're proceeding with caution, with mindfulness, a few smaller staff time and the costs associated. I'm pleased that we're all, and maybe in another couple of months we can look again. I have something to say. I, thank you for all this data. I'm one of the viewers as well.
But you worked on very long.
It was really, for me, it was hard to follow. I'm, I lost interest, it was like, oh gosh, this is going to be hard. I think for a person, the general public to listen, I think it's good for the public record for just for having this in our archives, it's very important. But I think for the general public, it's not user-friendly because you don't know who's speaking. You hear voices and unless you've been to a meeting, unless that person identifies themselves every time they speak, you have no idea who is saying what. And then especially the presentations with, let's say, for instance, Alex's presentation. I heard a presentation a little bit and I said I can't see the slides and it's hard to follow along and really get something out of the, and they're wonderful presentations and there's a lot of work that goes into those. So I would, I appreciate this is a step forward with the audio, but I would like to ask the board to reconsider and continue on with video. I just think that because this technology is available to us, that we should take advantage of it. And I think maybe more research going to the county supervisors meeting, it's all been done and we have costs here already. So, you know, for the time, a lot, and I think we, I think that there's, I mean, I just don't think that it's a really complicated way to, because I've seen city council meetings and like I've said before, I think that we, I think we owe, especially because we're in the business of public education, and I think that it, I think we should have, we should have been doing this all along. And I still believe that video recording is the, will be the most transparent for people and it will be, and there's, and there's no reason why we, why we shouldn't. And I know there was a, you know, a concern about disruption in the boardroom, but I think that public and open access to our meetings at any time and they can zoom through, there's lots of ways that they can go find a presentation, they could find a certain item with the, with the video, that that will far outweigh that access. that that will far outweigh, that access will far outweigh the, I just worry about disruption. And so I would like to move that we have another vote for her meeting.
Do I have her second?
I'll second to facilitate discussion.
I have learned a lot, Michelle, as a result of your bringing up this topic of you months ago. Although I'm at meetings that are recorded audio and visual video all the time, I never thought about it in the context of this meeting. And I think one of the bits of information that was the most enlightening to me is that other county boards do video recordings of their meetings, and that after COVID, possibly because of COVID and because of Zoom, it did get much more frequently used and frequently offered. So for me, it's been kind of like a learning curve. When I hear something new, I have a reaction initially, but I'm always open to becoming informed and aware and going from there. As a result of that, I'm not opposed to looking at video recordings. I'm not ready to say, let's do it. So I don't know where that falls with your motion. For example, one of the things I was thinking of is if we were set up to do the videos in the boardroom, and then we decide, no, we're going to meet down here. This is a pretty shallow room, and is that, I have a sense that it's more than unplugging a camera, bringing it down here and plugging it in. And so there's, I know there's always more to learning. You never know at all until you do it. Some things, you know, show up in the process. But as I said, I would not be opposed to looking and asking staff to do a little bit more research on the video recording than, yeah, I would, but not, I'm not ready to pull the trigger and say to do it yet. So that's just where I am.
Or is there more research that we can do that, I think that we asked staff to do that already, is there?
Well, no, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said research. I mean, now, specific implementation steps. What would we have to do? Not the research of how to or any of that, but what would it mean for us? What method would we use? So in a way, there might be some research as to the choices and options, but what would our choice be, and what would it look like, and what would it mean? Yeah, does that help, Michelle?
We'd be very glad to provide something similar like this, to just lay it out and provide some easy at-a-glance ways in which we could simply shift from audio to video. Be glad to bring that back right away. That would be, you know, and then we don't need to overcomplicate it in the presentation to you. We could provide the, here's how we would do it most simply. And if we wanted to, here's some more complex ways to do it. But what I'm hearing today is, you know, what would it take to move to video in a simple way that would also allow for the public to access the viewing, but also presentations? And I think with that in mind, glad to come right back with a summary like this, that time, and provide that to you with some extras as well. So we could take it from simple to a little bit more integrated.
I think that's a great idea. The other thing, I don't want to get into it now, but Austin brought up, what I recall has been important distinctions for ADA and other compliance, a higher standard for video than for audio. So we just, I think we did phase one, what county's doing, what don't. Remember all that, but that was a very robust discussion that we had on all of that. So that we have, I think we did what you just suggested, and we really want to be sure Austin's help, that whatever we propose as a method considers the effort and the cost for full ADA compliance.
So my comment would be, it's 2022, and to me, that would just be the best practice of boards. And it's kind of like asking at the district level, should we let our kids type their homework on computers? There's a lot of reasons to say no, but it's 2022, that's just what we did. So to me, this is, should be pretty straightforward, and it should be my question of how, whether if, so.
I think that's what I'm asking for more, is how, not do it, but how would we do it? But we have our motion on the floor, and it has a second. We had some discussion. I'm going to bring your motion back up for discussion. Specifically, you were to start, you moved that we start video recordings?
Yes.
Okay. And for a second, and so, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay.
So I don't know if we need a motion, just for the record, to move that we take this to the next level of consideration and finish, and completed stage one, stage two, is what the superintendent suggested, moving to the bottom, to not only the methods, but also consider ADA compliance.
Well, that's changing the motion.
Yeah, no, it's a new motion. We've already used that. It's a new motion.
So I just, we made some progress, and I don't want to just leave it as no, because I think there's an openness to do it, it's just, there's not a majority saying do it. I don't want, so, I don't know if I can get that, but it's what Susan said, plus ADA.
And I would add to that, once, moving forward on the eventuality of video recordings, we get our how-tos and then a timeline that's part of that, and then we can move to go forward. Also, a motion. Okay. So the motion is to, we don't need the discussion, and then the term. Move forward. Yeah. And I need a second.
I'll second.
I'll second. Any further discussion?
We have standard to read the motion. Especially Kami, I don't have to butcher this call.
I just wrote down, continue discussion, come back with how-tos and timelines. I can collaborate.
Did you have any others?
Yeah, Susan plus ADA.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Yeah, that's one thing that is really important, that we never stop learning, and we never stop asking questions and moving forward, that we don't stay stuck. So, all right. We, one more time, please, we need a resolution to approve using Zoom if we need to for held reasons. Second. Move second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, roll call, sorry.
Sorry, can we say to move in second?
I moved.
Okay, that's second.
Very good. Okay, roll call, Mrs. Carty? Mrs. Dany?
Aye.
Mrs. Stewart?
Aye.
Mrs. Frost?
Aye.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Mr. Porter?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, motion passes.
All right, any questions on the personnel report that was attached? If not, we can, we're kind of late on the public hearing.
Can I just ask a real quick question? How do we look for vacancies across the county going into the new school year for teachers? There were a lot of concerns about hiring, staffing, resignations, just where to start?
Oh, yeah, you know what? I would say, we were talking earlier about teasing out footballs. First school is starting, but what I won't tease about is that human resources departments across the districts are very, very busy in terms of needing to continue to fill teacher spots. I don't have the percentage or numbers at this point, but I will say, just in speaking with the districts, I think that's a huge focus right now in terms of hiring, completing their staff. It's still, and in fact, individuals are still moving districts, so you're still hearing, oh, you know, Maggie Dany is now moving over to Mary Beth, and so therefore, there's an opening that creates another opening. It's very late this year, I would say. It's much later, it feels, this year than it's in past.
How is SBCO with our direct contact staff?
Our teaching staff is your staff. We have classified staff. I always make sure that we've got the teaching staff in our JCCS program, your staff. In our special education program, we've got some hard-to-fill positions that are continually, continue to be hard to fill. Did you want to say?
Sure, I'm happy to. So we are fortunately, as of right now, this very moment, we are fully staffed with teachers, and we're really grateful for that. We are still hiring speech therapists and charge assistants, preparing for them.
Thank you.
We partnered with two cities, a job fair, and the district superintendent offered $10,000 signing votes, and we are really, really staffed with a lot of specialized teachers and specialized teachers who are valuable. And this job fair noticing, like, across the community, the city put in all its public information, scroll, it went out via so many different modalities of communication, and it's a pretty good turnout, and I'm very anxious to see what comes of it.
The headlines we're seeing nationally are absolutely overwhelming, except for county counties, well.
Challenging times for sure. Okay, we are quite a bit late for our public hearing. Why took this so long? Okay, public hearing on textbook and instructional material compliance now is open, beginning. Any public comments? Hearing none, public hearing is closed, and we have an action item now on adopting the resolution regarding textbooks and instructional materials. And there's an attachment on that, which is the resolution, which means a roll call.
We may suppose a resolution, move the resolution.
I'll second. Roll call.
Okay, Mrs. Carty?
Aye.
Mrs. Dany?
Aye.
Mrs. Stewart?
Aye.
Mrs. Frost?
Aye.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Mr. Porter?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. All right. Any future agenda items we would like to consider?
Mrs. Fosse, I'd like to...
Oh, yes, please.
Quick comments, really, just as an opportunity here. Wanted to prepare the board in terms of next meeting, when I do come back with the how-to on the audio video. I think the process, just in terms of speaking with staff, staff and our team, shifting from audio to video, is relatively quick in terms of the equipment that we have and the staff that we have. So just wanted to prepare the mindset for that conversation for next month, just so that you know what's coming. It might not be an elaborate, you know, sorry.
I welcome that.
Okay, great. And then secondly, in the trustee area too, or Dr. Dougal's area, one of the items that we did discuss as a staff was to send out another press release on Monday, when the application is actually available. So just wanted to let you know that that's something we're preparing, prepared to do. We believe that our website will be up, I'm going to say, likely by 9:00 AM or sooner from looking at Kami.
Yes.
That's the plan. So everything should be up on Monday, 9:00 AM or sooner.
Excellent. And we know that all the media may not pick up the press release, but I think it's a good thing to do and hope that they will.
The personnel was picked up pretty quickly.
It was.
And we had many kudos for the eloquent words, Judy. I'm sure that we're all right out of our mouth.
Yeah.
We appreciate that.
It was a great press release, and it was terrific, the way that you run it, it was...
I told Kami she could talk for me anytime. Maybe she might just sit up here. All right, then our next regular meeting will be September 1st, but we will be seeing everyone on Zoom on the 22nd at 2:00 on Zoom. So until then, we're going to need a lot of quality time together in August. All right, moved and seconded, and we are... Okay, get going, get going.